I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver Falls School Board to order. Welcome, everyone. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our consent agenda tonight, we had a revised agenda with a few new hires on it. Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval?
Second?
Second.
Was Erin?
Yep. Erin, okay. Okay, moved in second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on, our first audience with visitors for the evening. Don't have a big audience tonight, but if anybody wants to address the board, we'd love to hear your comments. I'd like you to keep your comments to three minutes or under. And if you're here for a group, just appoint a spokesperson. So, anybody? Gene? Please sign in, Gene.
I'll do it when I'm done. So, on the agenda tonight, I understand there's something about the agreement for the superintendent. And I just want to remind the board that when you have an agreement that you impose conditions in it that are contrary to the law of the land, or to the constitution of the land, that part would be illegitimate. It wouldn't be workable. So, you can't have an agreement that is contrary to the law. I just wanted to mention that, and that's basically all I've got. I continue to be concerned that we're proceeding with things that are under budget and not secure for students. I gave you some reference, quite a few pages worth, talking about conditions in the schools that are actually more hazardous, or the same as Eugene Field School, and I haven't heard any change in that direction. So, it would be, I think, appropriate that you reconsider and make things safe if you're going to continue down this path.
Okay. Any questions for Gene?
One more question.
Yeah, go ahead, Erin.
Gene, if you could elaborate, you've mentioned about it's contrary to the law of the land of the working agreement. In your mind, if you could elaborate a little bit on that, just to clarify for the record what your input on that is.
Well, if you have an agreement that makes you give up rights, or things that are contrary to the constitution, it isn't legitimate. You can't have, for instance, if you're an employee of a company and you have to sign this company agreement and says that you're going to drive company vehicles beyond the speed limit, and that you're bound to that, and if you don't, you'll be fined by the company. You can't, that's invalid. It just won't, it does not stand up.
Is there one specific here that you're concerned about, or is it just mainly?
No, no, it's just a general.
Okay. Thank you.
I've advised the council before, the board, about topics that are in executive session that are not legitimate as well, so... But I'm not here talking about that at the moment.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Gene. Would anyone else like to address the board? Nobody? Okay. We'll move along to discussion items. Some policies for review or revisions. These were some that Andy has put in front of us after our couple of work sessions we've had. Some with a few changes, some that don't have any changes, but we thought it'd be a good idea to kind of re-adopt them, because you notice the dates on some of them are quite a while ago when we re-adopted those last, and it'd be good to show that we've looked at them and, you know, updated them if necessary, or if not, that we've re-adopted them at a date, more current date. So, we'll go through these one by one. If there's anything, speak up. BBAA, Individual Board Members Authority and Responsibilities. Anybody have anything? Okay. BBF, Board Member Standards of Conduct. Nothing? BCD, Board Student Superintendent Relationship. Anything on that one? Okay. BCE, Board Committees. Okay. BCF, Advisory Committees to the Board. Nothing? Okay. BDA/BDB, Regular and Special Board Meetings. Okay. BDD, Board Meeting Procedures. BDDB/BDDC, Board Meeting Agenda. Nothing? BDDH, Public Participation in Board Meetings. Okay. BE, School Board Work Sessions. BF, Board Policy Development. BFG, Board Policy Review. BG, Board Staff Communications. CBG/GBH, Evaluation of the Superintendent. Okay. GB, General Personnel Policies. And GBD, Board Staff Communications. Okay. These are all first readings on these, so we need to do three, three readings, so we'll have them for the next couple of months if there's anything that pops up. Okay. 2015-16 Board Superintendent Working Agreement. This is the one that we talked about at our last work session. It's in our packet with the changes that proposed, and then some references to policies that Renee Sessler recommended putting in. Anything on this one? Everybody okay with how it reads?
Yeah, I think the additions are very good. Appreciate your work on that.
You bet. You're welcome. Ms. Chairman, if I can chime in too, because I'm, just to follow up to Gene's comments, I just want to be certain that the public knows as well, this is a working agreement, this is not a contractual agreement. If there's any confusion, or any question about that at all, this is our annual working agreement that we've been reviewing for the past five years and just updating.
Yeah, okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay. This is an action item to approve this later tonight, so... Okay. Nothing on that. Food Service Meal Prices for the next school year. We have this in our packet also. Little increases in certain areas. Andy or Steve, would you guys want to elaborate on this a little bit?
Yes, so, we did a review of our meal prices compared to some other districts around us, like districts, and also with keeping in mind the fact that our SEDEXO contract for 2015-16 increases by 2 percent, and needed to take a look at the whole picture. And so, we made the recommendation to make some modest increases in the breakfast and lunch prices for this year. It varies a little bit. For example, one thing that was a little bit odd in our district compared to others was the breakfast price of $1.50 was the same at every grade level, and that was, that was an outlier compared to other districts, for example. So, you can see we've increased to $1.60, $1.75, and $1.90 there. On the positive side, one nice outcome from the legislative session is that reduced-priced students, starting this year, will have their lunches for free, as well as the free students. That's something that's new. Reduced students' breakfast were already free due to a state supplement, but the legislature passed, I believe it was House Bill 2524, that is now supplementing the remainder of the reduced-priced students' meals. So, reduced students will also have lunch for free this year, so that'll be a benefit for the students.
Do you know how much, what percentage we have that are reduced, or what will that add to the free part?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
I'm not certain.
So, is that being reimbursed by the state, or?
Yes. Yeah, so, the feds obviously already provide reimbursement up to a certain point, and then the state will supplement the remainder, and that's the new part for this year.
So, is this to help the food program become profitable, or break even, or where are we at with this? I understand we're still losing money through all of last year, correct?
Well, we're still closing the books for fiscal year 14-15, so I'm not sure exactly where we're going to end up on that, but most school districts, it's a struggle to come out ahead, yes. It is. So, I'll have some further information on that as we move forward.
I didn't know the state had extra money to do this.
What's that?
I didn't know the state had extra money to do things like this.
Well, when the state budget went from 7.235 to 7.255 billion, the second iteration from the co-chairs' budget, the extra 20 million included 2.5 million and carve out specifically for this supplement.
Steve, is there any way you're talking about having more information for the next meeting? Is there? And you mentioned, is it easy to find the information, how many, say, our neighboring districts, or in general, how many subsidize, how many?
Sure. Absolutely. Would you like that information? Some more information?
Yeah, just kind of curious. I mean, we want to stay in the black, we don't want to subsidize it, but I'm just curious to see what our neighbors are doing.
As far as whether they're profitable or not?
Right, exactly, yeah. Exactly.
Sure.
Thanks.
And then, my other question is, if I remember correctly, that SEDEXO was saying that the amount of meals sold has increased since they've taken over. So, if that's the case, that'd be more profitability, why do we need this increase?
Well, I don't, as far as I know, we have not raised the prices. Is that correct, Andy?
Yeah, they've been modest a couple of years ago. We haven't really seen much of a price increase at all.
A lot of times, it's just to keep up with the cost of food.
Food, transportation, wages.
The cost of goods probably is just, you know, the standard costs there.
The food and nutrition requirements changed over the last two or three years as well, so besides just the standard inflation with regards to food, due to those new requirements, that also impacted, you know, as far as what could be purchased or not, and it's also increased above and beyond normal cost increases with regards to food, and also labor with administration time and that type of thing. And I assume the higher costs, like for breakfast at the high school, is just because those kids eat more, probably, huh? Than the grade school kids? They do. I don't know how, I haven't worked long enough with SEDEXO yet to know how they're breaking down their meal portions. Oh, yeah, I know. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. It would make sense.
Pretty minimal, you know, increase, Erin, to your point, Steve. We're getting better quality food for a quarter more, basically, kind of increase across the board.
Yeah.
From a parent's perspective, I'm enthralled with that, you know? So, if we can get better quality food, it's not a bad increase.
Okay, any other questions on this, comments? Okay. This is also an action item to approve these later this evening, so... We have a couple vacancies on our Budget Committee. Kurt Metzger and Melissa Cypher-Briggs have both indicated interest in running again, or in being on the committee again, so we would just reappoint them to the, instead of jumping up with new names, unless somebody has some new names or new ideas that you'd like to throw out there. Nothing? Okay.
Yeah, and you had one, those two individuals in Gordy Hoy, their term is up, and Gordy Hoy has chosen to not ask to be reappointed.
Oh, that's right, I agree.
To the Budget Committee. So, both Melissa and Kurt are very interested in being reappointed, and your practice has been, if you've been satisfied with Budget Committee members, to reappoint them through action at a summer meeting like this. And so, you will have one vacancy, however, that would need to be filled by September or so.
Okay.
Following any interest by folks in an application that's describing your policy.
Okay. What general areas is Gordon from? We like to keep it spread out.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You know about Bethany School?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I assume we should be thinking of people to try to, or do we post that or something? Put it in the newspaper? There's a vacancy.
Yeah, we routinely put it on the website when we have a vacancy, and of course, make it a public statement at a board meeting. I am aware of at least two, possibly three people who are interested, and indicated an interest over the last year or so that when a vacancy became available again. So, we'll follow up with those individuals and see what that interest looks like, and if any of you have any interest, excuse me, or any suggestions of interest, just let me know, and Denise and I will follow up.
I suggest we also get on the social media sites, too. You know, I think as soon as possible, I think that's very helpful, and letting you know the need is out there. So, and you said there'll be a link on the website as well, for the application?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Okay. Yeah, maybe on the school district's Facebook thing or something?
Yeah, very helpful.
Okay. Another discussion item, increased 2015-16 contract with First Student Transportation the amount of $14,460. This is a new one, just got added for tonight. So, Andy, do you want to?
Yeah, we've had some, actually, very recent communications with First Student, and First Student just hired a, or appointed, hired a depot manager for our district. And so, some decisions and some information has been moving very quickly over the last week or two. Mid-last week, we received a proposal from First Student. Actually, let me back up a little bit more. As all of you are aware, or at least those who were board members last year, and I'm certain that the other three of you have heard things, that there were concerns specific to bus and transportation service in the district related to a number of drivers, even some concerns about routes being completed in a timely fashion, occasional buses breaking down, and so forth. And through Danny's efforts, we were on top of that, I think, as much as any school district could be. In sharing notes with other school districts, and it really doesn't matter who the contracted service is, it clearly is an industry issue related to number of bus drivers, and some concerns about general busing. Some of that has to do with the economy, people, when they get, the economy begins to return, better-paying jobs, longer hours, et cetera, that you'd find with a bus-driving position. It's not uncommon for bus drivers to get, go to other positions. So, with that said, we clearly experienced some issues last year. First Student has responded, in Silver Falls, as it has in all of its other regions, by doing what it can to promote its bus drivers, to promote, I should say, the attractiveness of the bus-driving position, including some increases in the amount paid per hour. We don't know specifically by category, or by years of experience in our depot, but we've heard that the rate's around $12 an hour, or so, $1,250 an hour. First Student believes, and I agree with this, that in order to attract and retain drivers, so that we can help avoid the number of issues that we had last year, that the increase in hourly rates should occur, should be considered. And so, we're at one of a number of school districts where this is being asked. So, as a result, in our case, and every district varies, as a result, in our case, in order to accommodate their proposal to increase the rates to about $14 per hour to attract and retain drivers, that would mean an impact of what you see in the revised agenda, the $14,000, I don't have it in front of me, $460. That is, keep in mind, 70 percent reimbursable, or is 70 percent reimbursed through the state school fund by each year through our funding formula, so really, the true impact to the district is 30 percent of that figure. It's allowed in your budget, you have some flexibility in your budget to allow this, and the increase itself of the $14,000 is actually only 0.8 percent of an increase over the current contract to First Student. And I bring that to your attention, because, you know, if you quickly do the math and go from $12 to $1,250 to $14 an hour, it's clearly much higher than 0.8. We are doing some modifications to our bus routes this year as a result of full-day kindergarten, so we're able to eliminate some of the midday routes, or eliminate the midday routes, and being able to continue to stay within our current budgeted amount, and allow for something like this to happen with minimal financial impact on the district. Now, the other reason that I support this as well is, we ran into some issues last year, and again, I think they're industry-wide issues. And in order for us to sustain, I think, minimal distractions from transportation and the best possible instruction for our kids, it's to get them to school, and to get them to school reliably, and get them home reliably. And we had some hiccups last year related to that, and I believe having a better workforce specific to the transportation, the whole transportation base that we have related to drivers is going to make a difference. And in this case, I believe the investment is worth it. Minimal investment, which is going to result in some more reliability for our transportation system. So, I encourage your consideration of it, and of course, it's open for discussion, if you like.
70 percent is also reimbursable, correct, of this?
It will be reimbursed.
Okay.
When is their contract? Isn't it up in December?
One year left on their contract, in the contract, so June 30th of 2016.
Okay. I remember at one of the PTC meetings I went to, I think Danny was there, Scotts Mills, and there was an issue, I think some of the buses were new and some were old, and did they get that squared away?
Yes, they did.
They did? Okay.
Yes, they have done very well to make sure that our fleet is in line with what our contract says.
Yeah, you know, there was a lot of complaints last fall about that, or last spring. It was huge, and I, you know, just part of me, I may wait a few months, see how they do, see if things actually improve, and then, you know, then maybe consider it. That's my thought.
Other thoughts, questions?
I would support it. I think it's a good way to start. I mean, we're short on drivers. If you pay a little more money, it might increase that, help that situation out, because I know they were really short last year, a lot of times, so...
And we received an update today, actually, from Varsi, who is a new depot manager, Stritsky? Varsi Stritsky. And Varsi identified the updates to the buses, Todd, and also spoke about the number of drivers that they've hired, that they have sufficient drivers right now to maintain all of the routes on the first day of school. They're hoping to have a surplus of drivers, enough sub-drivers to be able to backfill if necessary, and that's their next goal, next objective. And I think we're in a good position. A year from now, we're going to be in a position to go out with an RFP to pursue another contract. And so, I tend to agree, Todd, that it's going to be an interesting time for us to see what it's going to look like a year from now. I think in order to fill this hole, something needs to happen now to take care of this. But I think you're going to be in a very good position a year from now to see who can sharpen their pencil the best for bus services for this district.
I know they were struggling getting enough drivers. I never seen them recruit at the level they were this summer, so anything will help.
Yeah. How long do these contracts last?
They can last as long as you like.
What was our current one?
Current one has actually been renewed a number of times, so... But at the same time, multiple companies have owned our contracted services. If you go back to Mayflower, and was it, was it Leyd Law, then after that was First Student, I mean, there've been multiple owners. So, Todd, the last time a contract has been negotiated has been before me. I couldn't tell you exactly, but I'll bet it's been 10 or 15 years anyway. And they've been renewed by board action in order, as long as the board is satisfied with the work of the contractor. However, I think with some of the disruption that we've had recently, we're again in a position to take a deeper look.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, I had some concerns about buses. I went on, I chaperoned on a field trip, and one of my sons missed half the field trip, because we sat halfway up to Portland in some strip mall waiting for another bus to come up because it broke down, so hopefully we can... Because I heard a lot of complaints about broken-down buses. We're getting off topic here about this, but yeah.
That's good. Yeah.
Very good.
Hopefully, they'll make some improvements this year.
Yes, yes.
That's why I kind of think it's best to let them prove themselves, prove they got those kinks worked out before we reward them, I think.
Well, I don't necessarily look at this as a reward. I look at this as something that might be necessary to attract drivers.
Cost of doing business.
Yeah.
They can absorb that for a couple of months, I think. That, absolutely.
Okay.
We have multiple First Student depots that are close to Silver Falls, and so, my sense is, while I understand that perspective, Todd, my sense is drivers will go to Molal, or to Woodburn, or to North Mary, and her other school districts that are currently hosted by First Students, who, which, whose boards, that's my understanding anyway, have taken action to increase their rates. So, it's a tough position to be in.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. An action item for later this evening also. Any other discussion items? Anybody has anything else? Okay. Administrator and staff reports. Andy, 2014-15 District Goals Report.
I'm going to come out and present to you it.
I'm sure we have plenty of opportunity to ask any questions related to this. Each one of you received a copy of the goals, and in front of you is a goals report for this year, and want to go through that. And first thing, though, is I want to comment that you have, you had two goals, board goals for the 2014-15 school year, and if you recall back to conversations that most of you had with the two people who helped with your visioning document, there was a lot of emphasis put on what it is that you're targeting and focusing on, and rather than having multiple annual goals, to really limit that, to one, two goals at the most, for you to really be specific and focused on what it is that you're doing. All of the other things come together, whether it be facilities, or curriculum, or any other matters that come across the district. But if that's your goal for the year, then you make the statement. So, you have two goals. One was specific to the visiting document itself, and that is to approve a comprehensive visiting document, implement as a basis for district-wide planning efforts and decision-making. So, I put some comments in front of you, I'm going to read those. "The activities in this goal area have been completed and continue to be monitored. The strategic visioning plan document was approved by unanimous vote of the board in September of 14." Pretty important information, I think, for this whole process, but it's a result of 15 months of efforts by multiple district-wide stakeholder groups, including a large representation of the public. "It's a timely and important addition to Silver Falls School District. The last visioning efforts were completed about 15 years ago." So, some comments related to its distribution and use. You'll see its website presence, paper and electronic communication to the community. "We've made an extra effort to distribute it to local businesses, chamber of commerce, real estate companies, senior centers, city hall, and others. Hard copies of the document are available to the public at each regular board and budget committee, meaning mission statement banners are hung on each school site, similar to the one here. It's a common theme of communication to employees and the community. In fact, hopefully, some of you noticed that last year, that with the uptick in our efforts in communication, that we included our strategic visioning plan document and the goals related to it as well. Office updates, you know, letterhead logo, et cetera." And then, I think the last bullet may be the most significant, and that is that the document is the compass for sites and district decision-making, including funding decisions and district priorities. "It's a living document to be reviewed annually with the potential for modifications as necessary for its five-year span." Even today, today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, all of the administrators are having their August in-service retreat, and it was a key theme of conversation today in multiple areas, obviously, specific to instruction and student improvement and growth. It was also specific to communication, it was specific to what we're doing with facilities, it was specific to how we can do exactly that, meeting the mission of our school district. So, I think it's real important that we, as an administrative team, continue to make it a priority, and it'll also be a theme with our August in-service when teachers come back and classified staff members come back. I encourage you, as a board, to continue to use it in your decision-making. Each of you have it, you know, on the back of your placards in front of you, and it's a visual reminder of the kind of decision-making, or excuse me, the compass that is necessary for this district to make decisions in the future. And I do, I have accountability and review on there, that administrators assume accountability for progress monitoring of the goals with updates provided at each regular board meeting. And we'll be coming back to you with some potential modifications to that, based upon input that the administrators provide. So, the second goal was related to administering the district facility plan with priority emphasis on discontinued use of Eugene Field School. So, again, to read some of my response there. "While this annual goal has been met, efforts to maintain all facilities across the district will continue. The discontinued use of Eugene Field is scheduled for August of 2016, and we're making progress on that decision. An unsuccessful bond election attempt in November of 14 resulted in modification of the approach that you originally discussed, which was the purpose for the bond, to approach, or excuse me, modification of the approach to complete this priority project. I do want to comment on a couple of other notable facility accomplishments over the past year. Awarded the State Seismic Rehabilitation Grant in a total amount of $2.5 million, split between, or million and a half at Butte Creek, and $1 million at Scotts Mills School. We received an email today that Denise will be forwarding to you tomorrow, but it talks about the reauthorization of the State Seismic Rehabilitation Grant over two years, and the amount of $175 million, $50 million, I believe, will be released in the first application process, and then the remaining 125 in the second application process. We've completed a full seismic evaluation of all schools in this district, and we know that we have a good candidate in Mark Twain, and there may be other candidates to consider as well. And we'll be coming back to you to be certain that we meet, I believe it's in October, mid-October deadline for that application, and would like to see all systems go, to see that happen as quickly as possible. I'll be working closely with Joel and with Steve as well, to be certain we're current with all information on that. A plan has been developed for repurposing of the Schleter Street campus to a middle school, and continued use of Community Roots Charter School, funded through use of a loan..." uh, funded through use of a loan, uh, sale of the Steel Hammer property. While that's not specific to facilities, I think it has so many connections to facilities, it's a piece of your property that you gave a lot of very good, uh, and thorough conversation and discussion to before you made that decision. Uh, increased funds budgeted for facility upgrades and maintenance. If you have any questions specific to that, um, Joel can surely answer those. I know, but if you recall from the budget development process, there are multiple, uh, funding, excuse me, facilities projects going on in the district right now, uh, for improvement to our schools. Addition of a full-time HVAC specialist to district staff, while that person hasn't been selected, Joel's in the position now of, of interviewing folks and hopes to have that person selected soon. Re-roofing of multiple district facilities. Again, another priority has been completed. Uh, security fencing projects completed or planned for completion at all elementary schools. We still have two or three schools yet to finish, but the majority are finished at this time. Uh, and I think it's important to note that wireless access points, uh, project have been completed at, at all district schools as well. And so now we're in a position, while it's not necessarily state-of-the-art equipment, uh, we've found the best equipment that we can afford, but we do have full wireless access at each of our schools in more of an equitable, uniform fashion, something that this district has never experienced, uh, before. So, tho- those are the two, two goals that you had for this year. Uh, you have discussion of goals as a topic at your, uh, work session in August, and, you know, you can carry that into September if you choose. Uh, I, I am going to suggest a, a couple of goal areas for your consideration as you consider those. I think you have, still have a lot of, of, of discussion, excuse me, a lot of, uh, activity going on related to facility transition. You, you may want to consider that goal area again. Uh, and with that comes, and we've had this discussion as well, uh, at a point next year, a discussion of uh, review of, of attendance boundaries, especially attendance boundaries related to, uh, Victor Point School, uh, attendance area and Scott's Mill School attendance area. And, uh, I believe that needs to occur, and that no doubt will have some direct connection to facilities. Uh, school improvement efforts with a focus on student growth as per your visioning document. I think if we're going to embrace the, the fifteen-month project that you have done and with full approval of your visioning document, it would not be unreasonable to target something that specifically addresses your visioning plan for the year. So again, uh, that could be part of your conversation as you move into August and September as well. And then the last one that, that comes to mind is, and, and you, you'll have to define this a little bit more, because I know some of you may have more input on this than others, and that's your, uh, board communication efforts, uh, out to the community. Uh, I know there's been some discussion about what that could look like, whether it be communication with, uh, PTC groups, whether it be, uh, uh, maybe a more scheduled opportunity for board members to be present in schools. Uh, something specific to you as a group, uh, I think would be a worthwhile, a conversation for you to have as a board goal for this year as well. Uh, it's interesting to note that one of the topics that the administrative team is addressing is specific to, to communication. And one of the themes that we're using is building a conversation from the inside out. I really like that, uh, because it, it tells that, you know, we have a story to tell, and that story is, is really the, 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 the varied number of successes that we have as a school district, and it's up to us as an administrative team and as a staff. And frankly, I think it's up to you as a board to help share that message from the inside out, to build that message from the inside out. So I encourage your consideration of that one as well. Surely no decision needs to be made tonight, but I throw those out there for your consideration. Would be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions for Andy? Comments?
Great, three great topics, one great topics.
Great topics, I, I think a couple of things that come to my mind, especially pertains to goal two, I think one, goal one is obviously that overarching theme that motivates us, and that seems to be in place, which is a fabulous goal. In goal two, with the facilities, I think a couple of things that I'll put out there that we should probably consider is, maybe you can even get more granular, so it's kind of a statement question at the same time, would be, um, maybe being more specific, whereas we have funds for facility upgrades and maintenance, maybe very specific and calculated into which facilities and developing hit list, so to speak, of those facilities, and what order we want to potentially, you know, improve those. And then the second thing would be kind of rolling that in maybe to like a twenty-year vision plan to say, okay, in twenty years, what, what do we see as critical needs for our facilities, whether it's based on increased attendance, whether it's based on age of facility and infrastructure, whatever that may be. So I'll just put those two things out there, uh, kind of under the, under the goal two and.
We, we actually have those documents, but it may be worth while to look at them again.
To be very laser-focused, you know what I mean?
Great, thanks.
Sure.
Anything else?
I'll throw one more out there.
Yeah, go ahead.
To dominate here, conversation. Uh, I like the point you talked about, Andy, about, you know, potential for our board communication in getting really out in the community and getting the word out. Thought that came to my mind, I wrote down there for, if we can chew on, maybe we, once a quarter or a couple of times a year, make one of our work sessions a, a true town hall, I don't know. Maybe, and I know these efforts have been done in the past when the, you know, the bonds come up. Maybe be very specific to the community and say, this is devoted to you, community. What, what, what other input can you give to us? And maybe a little, I don't know, again, we have public meeting constraints, but in a forum that's very open and accommodating for people to come, that maybe they don't, it's a little bit less, uh, I don't want to say less formal, but one that we can really truly show that we're working and reaching out to the community and community can truly give their input.
Yes, several years ago, we did a, I call it a round table, we had stations around the commons at the high school, and people were able to go from station to station and talk to us and.
Yeah, just an idea, something to think about.
Yeah. That could be very workable.
Yeah, I know OSBA has suggested that, what, as well, it could have been what you did in the past while they were to, um, listening sessions.
Yeah, that's what it was.
And, and many times I know if they're targeted, you get a little bit more, uh, uh, maybe useful or helpful information as compared to just wide open. Uh, however, I think whatever the board would like to do related to that can truly, truly happen.
Yeah, and one other thing we talked about in our last work session that you weren't able to come to, and was, um, possibly each board member taking a couple PTC groups and going out to those meetings and reaching out in that way a little bit.
And/or staff meetings.
Yeah, yeah. And plus just visiting schools, I mean, that's something we don't necessarily need to, you can schedule that individually, but that's something that's really powerful, it's just, and teachers love to see board members in, in their buildings. So, and Andy, I really like what you and the administrative team are working about, the publicity from the inside out. Because there are so many good things happening in, in, in this district, and we need to, we need to really focus on that and get those messages out there too. And that's one thing I would encourage us as a board to do is, I would even, you know, down the line, I, excuse me, I would even like to take some time at a me, at our regular session meetings to have board members share positive things that they've heard that are happening in the district. I think that would be a, I think that'd be a, I've, I've always thought that that would be a good thing to do, and I think maybe that's something we can, yeah, I'd like you guys to think about that in some way, we can maybe implement that. Because there are really good things happening, and the more we talk about them, the better it is, I think, so. Anything else on this? Okay.
Great.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you very much.
Steve, financial report.
Yes, so I've, uh, included a preliminary unaudited financial statement for the, for the fiscal year end, June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, which includes the, the May and June, June period, the date specifically, but, um, we're still, uh, closing the books, but, uh, it's about ninety-eight percent there. We, we, uh, there's things that happen even into August that have to be booked back into, into June. For example, property taxes that come in in July and August have to be accrued back to the previous year. This is our last week of, uh, paying invoices back into the previous year. So we'll have everything closed by the end of the month, and our auditors will be, uh, coming in in October to do final field work before our, uh, audited financial statement is assembled. But, uh, the numbers look great, uh, we came in, uh, about one percent above projections in, uh, current resources in the general fund by about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and we came in below budget on, uh, expenses. And, uh, uh, again, preliminarily, uh, we're showing a, about a half a million dollar increase to our general fund, any fund balance from about two point nine to three point four million dollars, which pushes us over the ten percent of current resources mark, which, which would be great.
Great.
Again, that, uh, might slide one way or another a little bit by the time, you know, it's all said and done with, but, uh, so. And on the backside, as you mentioned, Todd, you know, we have our other funds, again, there's still some work to be done there. Um, as you discussed in the food service, we're, um, uh, showing more expenses and revenue. Again, there's some, some, uh, year-end, uh, work to do there, but, uh, it's, it's a struggle in the food service. And as far as the grants and projects, um, there's still some grant revenue that comes in after the end of the year that we have to receive from ODE and accrue back there too, so that number will look better, so. And the school report will come back next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good news.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steve. Questions for Steve? Okay, Mr. Hannan and Mr. Cotts. High school report, graduation ceremony eligibility and community project upgrade, McGinnis Field. Welcome back, you guys. Hard to believe we're here again already.
We miss you.
Yeah, I bet. That was my first thought, all they're coming back because they missed us.
Well, thanks for having us, uh, back this evening, I appreciate the, uh, time. We have two things to, to discuss with you tonight, and, uh, we'll start with, uh, um, a project that we've come to you before. Some of you may remember a couple of years ago, Greg's going to, um, discuss a project that, uh, we feel is a long time coming, and, uh, so he's going to discuss the McGinnis Field, um, uh, proposal. And, um, some of you, I, I hope you know, um, we recently received a grant, a fifty thousand dollar grant, basically seed money, if you will, um, uh, to, um, to start this project. But that, uh, grant comes with a one-year, um, uh, time limitation to begin, uh, construction, so we are on the clock. Uh, so Greg's going to, uh, discuss this project.
So Andy asked me to set this up for you guys in kind of two formats. The first page is kind of a historical timeline, kind of where we've been. Um, so initially, this kind of started in two thousand and ten. Hon- honestly, a lot of this was what we see when we go to other facilities, what our athletes say when they visit a facility typically nicer than ours. Uh, and, um, and then what parents say and, and, and kind of trends that we see, and obviously in this case athletics. So just initially started off in October two thousand and ten with, with researching some other schools. The Eugene School District at that time had put in some artificial turf fields, um, some other schools in our conference, for example. Meeting with vendors, kind of seeing what kind of products were available, um, you know, kind of the lifespan of, of some of those products and things like that. Um, started some internal conversations at, at our building level, uh, included the district office. At that time was asked to put together kind of a cost analysis of, of money we currently use for maintenance and, and upkeep on our, on our grass facility at that case, in, at that time. So the estimate at that time was about thirteen thousand dollars in, in two thousand and ten annually that we spent either upkeeping McGinnis Field in its condition and then also adding on to it, if we had a turf field, what expenses do we incur if, you know, being, having to move, not having turf on our, in that, in that, uh, in that space. So had some of those conversations, we, we initially had a board presentation requesting to start fundraising at that time. Um, and, uh, and had good con- discussion in the evening, talking about that. There were some support, supporting groups there, uh, the Silverton YMCA was present because they use the facility for track and field and some soccer. Um, we had Silver Falls Soccer Club folks speak at that time, and, uh, and, and at that time, the school board just asked for kind of additional information and, and continuing to research and keep an eye on, on this trend. The April two thousand and twelve that's listed there is actually a typo, I made a mistake, there should be April two thousand and eleven, if you want to scratch that out. Just continued our internal conversations, we collected price quotes from, from artificial turf vendors. Um, you know, tried to get a little bit more of a detailed look at what this project actually entails. At that time, put together a detailed maintenance cost comparison, which has been presented to you, I believe. And that, uh, that cost ended up being a little closer to the fifteen to sixteen thousand dollar, uh, range annually that we spent, that, that would be different if we had a turf field. A lot of, a lot of those costs are, when we do have to move, as our, as our, specifically as our football program has improved and changed, we go a little bit deeper into the, into the wetter seasons and, and they end up having to move around as much as possible. So by the time their season is done, they actually move around a lot, and we have to go back through and systematically put those facilities back together again. So, um, even, even the pine complex, as we lose light, um, and start to practice on some of those fields with the, kind of the state-of-the-art drainage and, and the nice grass that we've planted and everything being, being, uh, landscaped and everything, it still doesn't take long for the high school kids to kind of go through and chew up some of the grass there, especially when it's wet. It's just not conducive to having traffic on it. Have some letters that were submitted, um, I believe at a school board meeting. One was from the Silver Falls Soccer Club, the other one that I had mentioned from the Silverton YMCA, wrote a formal letter about, um, just requesting support for a project of this nature in Silverton. Uh, January two thousand and thirteen was a school board presentation where we, where we discussed again the project and, and maybe, um, going in a little bit of a direction where it was a little bit more formal to, to fundraise and start to request some grants, um, and putting some of those efforts forward. We identified three main projects, one, the synthetic turf surface, two, the aging track surface that we have and how best to address that. And then three, we have some, uh, some lighting, uh, issues that we've, that we've seen over the last eight years and just having to address those, whether it's changing bulbs, or we have lights that don't work, or we have a switch that doesn't work. And each year, there's a little bit of, uh, cost to repair those things, something, you fix one thing and something new pops up. So we have to address those as they come up. So those are kind of the three main projects, and, uh, and what we're looking at doing is just tackling one thing at a time, just biting off what we can, and, and then once that project will be completed, moving to the next, next project. So that's kind of our overall goal there. Um, school board said, agreed at that time that that was a, a worthwhile fundraiser, um, and, um, and, uh, kind of gave us the okay to, to begin to formally fundraise for that and write some grants. So we went and talked to the Silver Fox Foundation about kind of being the, the face of this and, um, and, uh, requesting for them to, to, to oversee it and, and, and to be, hold our money and be the, be the account basically for this project. They approved that. We also had, uh, an effort in, um, in May of two thousand and thirteen on the bond, um, where a synthetic turf field was, was included in the bond. And then just recently, we've received some donations, we had a ten thousand dollar donation from the trust fund of Dean Stiles. That was a cash donation, and then we were successful, a private grant writer wrote a grant for us through the USA Football Foundation for fifty thousand dollars. So we were successful in that, and that's what Mark was referring to, kind of puts us on a clock a little bit, it's a very aggressive clock. But, um, we've had, we have a committee together, uh, made up of, uh, Silver Fox Foundation folks, um, some youth football folks. There are some, there's a representative for the city of Silverton, there's some Silverton High School people on there. And, um, and, uh, at this point, we have, um, we have, uh, since our last couple of meetings, we have a couple of, uh, businesses that have agreed kind of informally and verbally only, and we're at about, uh, a hundred thousand dollars on top of what I had submitted, which, so we're at about two hundred thousand dollars in cash right now in, in terms of fundraising efforts, and that, cash and grants. So on that second page, just kind of this format was kind of where, you know, where we've been, what we've seen. We have the beautiful complex at Pine, you know, the intent of that, uh, when it was put into the bond was just to, you know, basically establish a parks and rec, and the school district took that on, and what we've seen is it's, it's full a lot. I mean, and it's, and the, and the great thing is, is it's full with a lot of different sports going on at the same time. So in the fall is kind of the time, there's a lot of energy out there, you go out there and you'll see youth football, you'll see youth soccer out there, you'll see cross-country kids running around, and, and the complex is full, and that's, and that's a pretty impressive sight. And so, you know, we, in, in terms of the football field slash soccer field at McGinnis, we, we have some incredible. And so, you know, we've in in terms of the football field slash soccer field at McGinnis, we we have some incredible capital over there in terms of covered seating, a lot of seating. We've got the track around it and it's just, we're just not able to use it the way we'd like to. You know, like I mentioned before, you know, our our soccer teams and our football teams go a little bit deeper in the fall and it's just a really tough time with the weather. And so we actually end up having to leave and go rent facilities for practice. So football has done that, girls soccer has done that, boys soccer has done that. So that's a trend we'd like to change a little bit and paying attention to what other school districts are doing. Currently, right now, there's three schools that are installing turf this summer for their fall football season. That's West Albany, McNary and Sweet Home, all doing it privately funded. Other factors that I had put down in there, just one was eliminating the need for irrigation at McGinnis Field. I know everybody's very, very water conscious and so we want to be thoughtful about that. The the use of lawn chemicals is another topic that that continues to come up. And then obviously reducing the maintenance cost in the amount of about fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars. Some some support groups there that I had mentioned previously and then kind of a a cash grant total that that is at the bottom there. So any, that's kind of just the information piece. Are there any questions?
We focus a lot on the turf, which I understand, but I think a more immediate need right now is the lighting. If you compare the lighting at that field versus Pine Street, just it's pretty stark. And even even the football games, it's sometimes it's hard to see what's going on. Could we focus on the lighting to get the project started there? At least you can just kind of take a bite out of and then.
Yeah, I I mean, we haven't, we haven't really talked about that that lighting piece.
I can address that. The reason that we chose not to do that, Molly, was to to garner the support of these other groups. We had to, the the carrot for them is the use of the complex. That doesn't, that that improves the the overall use for the football team, but that doesn't provide Pop Warner an opportunity to to participate there. Doesn't provide so it can be soccer. It doesn't help any of our our fall sports that we have to move around for playoffs, the opportunity to practice. So we decided to to go with something that we could gather the most support with the most benefit to the user groups.
Is this fifty thousand dollar grant? Is it tied directly to turf or could it?
Yes.
It is, okay.
It's specific to turf. It's specific to one turf company that's already been through a basically a bid. It's already gone through the bid process. It's part of a part of a co-op. They call it, it's if you research, it's called a smart buy program. And it's basically a set price that has already been through that process. So it would be, it's with Field Turf is the name of the turf company.
I think the last time we talked about this, there's a ten-year lifespan on this. Is it still, that's still the case?
So it's so it's between, it's about ten to twelve years. And and what they're saying now is there's a lot of research on the upkeep, you know, of it. So basically if you continue to fluff the pellets, which is typically with the installation, they will, they will throw in a grooming machine that you might pull behind maybe maybe once a month. Once every, you know, a couple of weeks if you're in real high traffic, maybe during the fall season. And just making sure that the level of the pellets is is that is where it needs to be. As the as the pellets remove, they get, you know, water or whatever removes the pellets. As the pellets go down, you start to expose the fibers a little more. That reduces the life of your of your field. So most of them are in that eleven, ten, eleven, twelve-year replacement range.
Our initial plan would be to set aside the money that we would normally spend on maintenance of that field and and put it away until it's time to replace the field. And the field replacement is roughly about.
Two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand.
Three hundred grand.
To replace the turf or replace?
Just the turf.
Replace turf.
Because there wouldn't be any of the infrastructure you'd need to address.
And then after the ten, after the lifespan of the artificial turf is up, what does that replacement cost?
That's that's the cost.
That's what's the cost.
Oh, okay, that was the grass.
You know, if you're going to dig out or.
Yeah, right, right. So you set the, you set the drainage, you set the gravel, you set the grade and then you just basically peel up the turf and lay the turf down.
Yeah, what was that again then? I'm sorry.
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred, okay.
For replacement cost.
What did we say the yearly maintenance cost was? Is it going to be similar?
About sixteen, we're, right now, we're about sixteen thousand dollars annually.
With our grass.
Yeah, with our grass. And that and that includes some things at Pine Complex when we go over there and we use those fields and have to clean those up.
And then how how much is it for, there's, other than like kind of re-fluffing the the carpets, there's not really much maintenance per year, is there?
No.
Okay. And and I think I'd like to hear that kind of contingency that you're going to be, so we're going to take that money, we're going to keep like we're still paying for maintenance. We're going to stick it in the fund for ten years, twelve years down the line when we need new turf. I think it's a a great idea. I also think it's a, you know, I'm a little biased here with my athletic background coming out, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a great deal. Not only, again, for football, but for the youth soccer, the Pop Warner. And I asked Andy about this this week, you know, just asking him, you know, about some of these things. And, you know, you look at this, it's not just a small window of use now. I'm going to other facilities, it's, it's.
Seven days.
Seven days, we're three hundred sixty-five, twenty-four seven if you really want to. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a great, it's a great thing for our community, just like the Pine Street campus is.
Aaron, I'll be perfectly honest, taking on another facility that that we would then manage when we've got the Pine Street facility and the auditorium and all of those things that that go along with that is is a daunting thing to do. But we feel like it's the right thing to do because it's, it's, it's a, from an infrastructure standpoint with the with the grandstands like Greg was talking about, it's really a nice facility to use as few times a year as we use it. One thing I I do want to address also, it's, it's been brought up in the past and obviously with the the local farmers that, grassy farmers here in 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 this area that we would be replacing a a grass field with a synthetic field. And last fall, we brought in a a local turf farmer, grass turf farmer during the playoff season because we were concerned we weren't able to practice on it. And so they came in and and did some work and took a core sample and the core sample was all clay. And the comment from this particular gentleman was, why don't you put artificial grass in this field? And I, I, after I laughed a little bit, I said, you know, that's a great idea and one that we hope to to do at some point. So it it, we're not trying to put grass seed farmers out of work. We're just trying to make a facility more usable for, you know.
Injury wise too, I mean, you think about that, you get in a bad field late in the season, you could really have, again, come back to our kids' safety. You can have kids getting hurt. You have a consistent surface, surface from June to November to February, it doesn't matter. You've got a great safe surface for our kids to play on.
Guys, I was just doing a quick cost analysis in my head and it it sounds like grass is cheaper to maintain. It mean, you have that sixteen, thirteen annual cost, but you don't got to, you don't have the three hundred thousand dollar replacement every year. But on the other hand, you got, you got a place you can use a lot more. So that's the trade-off. Just make sure you get those fleshed out. You know, because because I mean, people are going to say it costs more and I mean, I I'm kind of doing that in my head right now.
Currently, we use McGinnis less than twenty times a year.
Right. And it seems silly.
They don't practice on it. They, they, I mean, they really don't touch it.
Yeah, well, you can't.
And it puts us in a position where we have to tell other user groups, no, we don't have any space. We don't.
Right.
So instead of telling them, no, we can take on this project and once we get it installed, now we can start saying yes to a lot more groups and it can open us up for for additions.
And actually, we haven't incorporated this into the proposal, but it's, it actually could be a revenue maker. We we go to other facilities and rent those facilities. People would be coming to us in in that case. Now, obviously, we're not talking about our own user groups, but we're talking about neighboring the facilities, J F K, for example. So the the possibilities there as a revenue maker exist also.
Is is this site, is this our, is this in our long-term facilities vision, which I don't know if really, if this is where we want to play football for the next twenty-three years?
Yeah. And and a lot of it's based on there's just the 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 stands, you know.
Yeah. It's a great spot.
It's a great facility, yeah.
Parking. I'm I'm not sure if we had a football game, Pine would, you know, would be able to.
No.
So we've thought about some of those.
Yeah.
My understanding, Tom, in the phase two of the high school, when that was removed in in that bond project, the discussion was there would need to be more property, probably from Mr. Roth or whoever Mr. Roth runs from, acquired by the district to accommodate something of that size.
That's perhaps a discussion at the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I did, I'm asking questions that I'm pretty sure I know the answer to, but I'm just trying to flesh them out.
Absolutely.
Hey Greg?
Yes.
You mentioned that in order to retain the fifty thousand dollar grant, work would have to be completed by September of two thousand sixteen.
That's correct.
So it's a fairly aggressive timeline?
Yep, it's a very aggressive timeline. We've, we met with a couple of project managers and and it it will be a very tight timeline. A lot of it'll hinge on, a lot of it'll hinge on how much money we can raise and how quickly we can do that.
So when's the drop dead date for construction to begin in order to maintain that?
It'll, well, yeah, we would want to, we would want to break ground in June. So we would make a decision in May sometime whether it's a yes or it's a no. And and one of the communication pieces that we're going to put out there as we as we proceed is that our our backup plan is that we would have to hold off until the following year.
So is this protocol with Silver Fox or any foundation or is this their specified timeline? I mean, is there any, can we enlarge that timeline?
Well, that's based on the ground.
Yeah, that's based on the ground. So if we don't make the timeline, we lose fifty thousand dollars.
So we can't show any good faith, beginning work and and maybe extend that timeline? It's a drop dead.
Well, and we wouldn't break ground because then that would impact the football season and that we couldn't, we couldn't go without a football field. So we would, we would lose that, so.
So, I mean, if souped to nuts, if you started today, what is about sixty-day install, give or take, on average?
Uh, so one of the things that we're trying to do though is we're, we're trying to get some in-kind help from construction folks and stuff. We got to get the dirt out, we got to get a drainage set up and we have to get gravel in. So based on constructions, if something hangs up and it starts to push us back, the turf installation is probably, I think they're probably three weeks. That would be pretty aggressive for them, but I, they would be willing to put it in probably an install in three weeks. So it's cutting it super tight. It's cutting it really tight.
You'd have to start them to get in in June.
Yeah, they break ground June first is kind of their goal and and they're done and guaranteed probably the third week in August, second week in August.
Okay. That's what I figured.
And that's what the three, the three sites that we visited right, right now, Sweet Home, McNary and West Albany, they are all installing turf right now.
Are they doing it with?
Just wrapping up.
And you mentioned, oh, some, well, half the projects, in-kind labor. So are they doing it with that?
All of these are using that model, yeah. All of these. So we're basically following the Salem Kaiser model where it was spread, started that, West Salem, they did the West Salem resurface and now McNary is the most current one. And they're all following that model where a five oh one C three group is, the funds are being run through there. So it saves, saves on some costs, it's community oriented, the community, formerly the community is doing the project and then is donating that project to the school district. So it's very much a community-based fundraiser project.
You mentioned this grant's tied to one turf manufacturer, correct? So we're, that's not a negotiation at this point. We would lose the grant if we went to another manufacturer.
Yes.
Okay.
So a couple of questions real quick. Dana Smith, a couple of weeks ago, she brought up to me, there was a GoFundMe tied to this now? So who's behind that?
So the Go, the GoFundMe site is actually just, it's basically just a vehicle so people can have some security if they do donate money. The account is set up through the Fox Foundation. So when they donate money, it will be deposited into the Silver Fox Foundation. And that needs to be communicated a little bit clearly. We had a couple, a lot of questions when that first went up as a draft.
And then the Fox Foundation would in turn, at the end of the project, make a one-time donation to the school district.
I see, okay. And the other thing I had is when that came up, I had a lot of the parents and whatnot of of Pop Warner, soccer, all that stuff. And, you know, they they like grass too, but, you know, they they like both, but there was concerns about having two sets of shoes then and, you know, the increased costs with that.
It's actually just one set of shoes. You you, you can use whatever shoes you want on the, on the surface. It's a very deep, I mean, it's not like carpet like this or in your living room. It's a very deep surface that you can put cleats up to like half inch into it. Our high school kids don't change cleats when they go to a new facility. They they use.
I've played on both. I mean, if if you wear your normal cleats, whatever you want to wear, I mean, you'll never.
It's pretty, yeah, it's pretty.
Yeah, last time I played at Parker Stadium, it's bought out the big racks of smelly shoes.
That's a whole different.
Okay. This is the astrid, this is our, our, our old, you know, version astrid turf. This is, this stuff is pretty good.
Okay. This is a good thing. This is a good thing. I hope it, I hope it's successful.
Yeah, I have a lot of positive feedback so far, so we're just really working hard, trying to get some, get some organization and and get the work going, so.
The one thing that I like about the tight timeline is it creates a sense of urgency. And we certainly have that already, but now the the community knows too that we have a timeframe that we're trying to get this done. And we feel that, you know, local communities like like Sweet Home in Lebanon that have done these kinds of projects with in-kind work, that this community is definitely capable of some, something like this.
Good. Other questions about this, about this topic? Okay.
All right, thanks gentlemen. Last thing that I wanted to address this evening, I'm beginning year seven as a principal at Silverton High School and this has been an issue since I became principal that just doesn't feel right. And so I bring this to your attention because I want to change the participation of commencement rules, if you will. Right now, obviously, that you have before you states that all students in good standing who have successfully completed the requirements for a senior high school diploma, modified diploma, extended diploma or alternate certificate may participate in graduation exercises. Pretty, pretty broad in general. So our practice has been if a student has the potential, possibility in their eighth semester of earning three and a half credits in that eighth semester to meet the graduation requirements, we've allowed them to participate regardless of the outcome of that eighth semester. That puts about approximately ten to twelve students each year that participate that would not participate because they they end up deficient. Now, it's not our intention to keep students from participating in graduation. It's our intention to provide a incentive for them to finish. And we have many students that don't, within a half a credit, one credit, and they don't finish. They don't finish with us. And I want to provide an incentive, which it's a big incentive, walking is a big incentive for kids. I want to provide that incentive that it's going to be twenty-five point five credits to participate in the commencement ceremony at Silverton High School. And I want to be able to, when I make the statement that the students before you are receiving a diploma, are receiving a diploma. And that's, that's always bothered me. I don't think it's clear that that's what's happening. And I want to change it. I want students, I want that to be, it, I want it to be the important ceremony that that everyone that shows up there feels it is. And I want it to be something that students can feel proud if they're walking across that stage, they're getting the diploma.
Good for you. I agree with that.
Yeah.
So you say this, this affects about ten students a year roughly?
You know, I went back the last four or five years and it it fluctuates from year to year, but that's, that's approximately what we're talking about.
So basically rewrite the rule, you don't have enough credits, you don't participate.
Yeah, and and so what I have before you is our, is our proposal. And we put this together this past spring. Teresa Gerlitz was was instrumental in in helping me with this. And we put, if you, if you see the deadline there, we placed it two weeks prior to graduation ceremony. That's not set in stone. We, we want to do a a little bit more discussion amongst the administrative team. I'll probably put this out before the department coordinators also and I'd certainly be open to your suggestions. But but what we want to avoid is we want to avoid the student that has relatives from out of town, book flights, show up and find out that their student's not participating. We want to be able to give them a fair warning that the student unfortunately did not meet the requirements and will not be participating. So I don't think that will completely eliminate it. So I don't think that will completely eliminate it, but we want to minimize it for sure. You'll also note the other requirements to participate, academics is only one, one piece, attendance, we place students, and we started that this spring, we placed students on attendance contracts, and if they do not meet, and these are students that are, are not attending at a regular rate, in fact, their attendance is horrific. And so we place them on, on contracts, and, and commencement is one of those carrots that, that we want to be able to use. Behavior, as long as the student's not, has not been expelled in the eighth semester of their senior year, you could be expelled in a previous year and still participate. Senior work day, we feel very strongly that that's part of their character growth and giving back to the community, and, and so we've made that a requirement along with the standards and commitment form, and that's to maintain their behavior throughout the process. So those are the things that it would take to participate, and it's not a huge change, the, the change would be that students that walk have those 25.5 credits along with those other things that we've already been doing.
Will this affect the special needs kids anymore?
No.
Okay, good.
No, you, you'll note the extended diploma, modified diploma, alternative certificates, those are all already in place. Now, it could affect a student on an IEP that doesn't pass 25.5 credits within their IEP, but that's, that's just how we would deal with any other student.
I like this, I think it's a good idea, Mark. I always assumed that the kids walking would get a diploma, so it makes sense, and there's, with all the safeguards in place for the kids with the RIE and AG groups, there's no reason that a kid shouldn't know where they're at and they're, if they're, if they're at risk for the, for not walking. The only thing I would suggest is, and I like the two-week thing, but the only, only thing I would suggest that even, and I know you guys probably already do, but even earlier in the semester to, if a kid's at risk, let the parents know.
Yeah.
Because a kid might know from AGs and everything, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that gets home.
We, we talked about that, and, and the, the only thing that, that makes that difficult is teachers that, that want to assess their students with a final, getting through all of the material in a, in a timely manner over the course of the semester. The students that, that clearly are not going to make it will communicate that prior to that, that deadline. We just need a deadline that works for those students that they need to pass economics in their eighth semester, and it's, it's going to be close, and.
Well, even to Tim's point, just let the parents know they're at risk.
Oh, absolutely, that, that's, that happens already.
Yeah, I thought it probably would. Okay. Or even, you know, I know that happens already, but make sure the parents know that they're not going to, that they won't be able to walk if they don't.
If you don't pass.
If they don't pass this.
Right. This will be, assuming that I receive your approval tonight, this will be communicated to parents very soon, it will be communicated to the staff, and we will start with this year's senior class.
Sounds good to me. I don't think this is, this is anything we need to take formal action on, is it, I mean, it's already in our policy.
Unless you choose to change policy.
Yeah, okay. Okay, it sounds very good.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Greg.
Okay, any board reports tonight?
Ms. Chairman, if I can just comment briefly, just on behalf of Mark and Greg as well, and, and thanks for bringing that up, yeah, unless you, unless you take action to adjust this policy, this really is an administrative decision at the site level, and so unless there's any hesitation on the part of, of the board majority, then I think your, your lack of action is the go-ahead for Mark to pursue this.
Of course.
And, but related to the, the field turf project at, at the high school, I mean, you have taken action in the past to approve that with your approval of the resolution for the bond in 2013, that included installation of turf on that field. I, I think there is some merit for your consideration to, for, for the board to consider action in support of the community effort to fundraise for this. You don't have to take action because there's no appropriation by you, there's no policy change, there's nothing that's sort of within your, I, I suppose, decision-making need at, at this point in time, because it's a gift from the community coming to you. However, if, if you truly support this and see this as a benefit to, an investment to the students of this community, I think your attention and your formal action to say, we support this community effort, will make a big difference in seeing this happen, especially with a, with a 12 or 13-month timeframe. So I encourage your consideration tonight for you to take action on this matter as, as simple as support the community efforts to upgrade the Guinness Field.
Okay. Okay, any board reports this evening? Correspondence? I don't think we had any, did we, Andy?
No, we had one today that Denise will forward to you tomorrow from, from OSVA or from state agency on the state seismic rehabilitation, and we'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay. Our second audience of visitors, would anyone like to address the board? Gene?
I'll just make a comment, you have night of the 12th, return to regular open session, that's not according to the law. You can't, you can't, no, you can't get rid of the audience who's here to listen to you and then go into executive session, it might take an hour, and then say you come back into your regular session, and it's over.
Well, anybody's welcome to wait outside, we always go back to regular session after our exec, we always move out of executive session and go back to our regular session before we adjourn the meeting. So anyone's, any, anybody is, well, anybody who wants to can wait, can wait outside, and we can call them back in.
Yes, they could, I suppose, but the law says that that is not legal, so I'm just telling you.
Ms. Chairman, I'm sorry, but you've had this procedure fully approved by Oregon School Board's Association.
Yeah.
You had a training a couple of weeks ago that says that's entirely appropriate for you to excuse the audience and bring them back into executive, or from, after executive sessions.
You cannot have a discussion afterwards.
We don't.
We don't, Gene.
It's just formality.
I don't know where you're coming from with this, but just for the record, our executive sessions have been within the law all along, so I'm not even going to discuss it anymore with you.
I, I already know from words spoken during regular session that they have not been reported.
Okay, well, that's, that's your, that's your opinion, and that's your opinion, Gene.
I will submit to you that the.
Okay, we're going to move on.
From the attorney general.
Gene, we're going to move on, okay?
That's fine, I'm okay.
Okay, we're going to move to action items. Our first one, approve the proposed district food service meal prices for the 2015-16 school year, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, oh, excuse me?
Nay.
Okay, Todd voted no on that one. Okay, our second action item, approve the 2015-16 board superintendent working agreement, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Aaron? Okay. Any discussion?
I'm, I'm still not comfortable with that wording in there, that's just me, so.
Can you, which one, Todd?
It is. Let me see. Yeah.
Can you be specific as to what you're uncomfortable with?
Yeah, it just seems, you know, kind of absolute for, for any dissent, and then as well, you know, if, if the board made a, passed something a majority, and then a, a citizen came in here and asked, you know, said, hey, why did you vote against this? And you say, well, I voted against it because of A, B, and C, that kind of undermines the, the board.
I disagree, I think you can state your personal opinion, but you don't actively work against it, you don't campaign against the board, but you can certainly state your personal opinion.
I think, I suppose.
I think, I think actually you're expected to do that.
To come back to the, doing the damage to the board piece, you, you vary, I mean, I could say, you know, I'm voting all against you, I think you guys are, you know, full of beans, and now I'm not going to vote for it, but it's what I do after that.
No, and I, I get.
Is the question, I think it's the whole intent of harm, or to try to undermine the board from that point on is what, is what the intent of this, this board point.
No, and I, I get that, I, you know.
I think it's, I don't, and it's, what it's saying is you're not going to be out there trying to derail the decision the board's already made.
No, I'm not.
I mean, if somebody asks you your opinion, yeah, you can say, yeah, I voted against it for this, this, and this, but, but you're, but I don't think you, but you don't actively try to derail that decision, or work against that decision.
Have the power to.
Yeah, that decision, you know, coming to fruition or whatever, so.
I understand, just a personal question.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor on approving the working agreement? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passes? Third action item, reappoint Kurt Metzger and Melissa Seifer-Briggs to three-year terms as budget committee members, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we have a fourth one, authorize the increase of the 2015-16 contract with First Student Transportation in the amount of $14,460, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I, I still think we'd be better off to wait a couple of months and, and see how things go, see if things have approved, we're not talking a huge, like, year or two, just a couple of months, make sure they're on the right track and.
I think we got to remember, again, pardon my, you know, going back to sports, it's their contract year, they're going to do everything they can to be buttoned up and prettied up and perfect, so.
Well, that was a huge bone of contention this last spring.
I mean, it was totally understandable. And did they address everything from your perspective that, that was the problem?
Don't know.
It sounded like earlier in our discussion, we had a lot of positive input that a lot of it was addressed, but asked to be addressed.
But just like with any business or like that, let them prove themselves, they are, hey, you know, great.
This is, I think you got to look at making sure that they can pony up to what they prove, you know, what they promised to with hiring good drivers, getting good people behind the wheel, quality people that you want our kids behind the wheel with, and to make sure that they can meet our needs. And again, the cost of doing business, and again, remember, 70% of that subsidized.
And I get that.
I also like, I also like Andy's point about drivers going to a neighboring district if they know they can make two bucks an hour more.
Well, but I think we were only talking 50, 50 cents an hour more or something, wasn't it?
No, they.
Potentially two dollars an hour.
Two dollars an hour more.
Two bucks an hour more.
Frank, frankly, I think it's a little embarrassing, we're paying these guys so little, they've got a very important job of transporting our children, of making sure that they behave on, on there, and it's pretty amazing these people are willing to do this job even for, for this wage.
They're the ones setting their, their.
And believe me, I've been on my share of sketchy, sketchy bus rides on field trips many years ago, and I would more than willingly pay $2 more per hour for a drive, for a driver who I know is going to.
No, and I'm definitely not.
Keep those kids safe, that's all I'm going to say.
So, you know, I just, I just think that the, the company with the problems they had, I think a couple of months show us that they've turned those things around isn't out of line.
Okay, well, they can also answer to that in a year when we look at contracts too, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, and would anyone like to entertain a motion for the, like Andy suggested, for support of the community effort on the turf field? Or is that something we want to discuss a little more and weigh on?
Might be more into discussion, just to kind of understand what we want, I mean, unless it's just a, maybe support it, you know.
Yeah, we could, why don't we have that as an agenda on our August work session, just a quick discussion about it, and then we can approve it at our September.
It might get more attention in September anyway.
Yeah, when school started. Okay, okay, put that on our August work session.
If you're all, ask a question about that?
Yeah.
So in the interim, what do we do?
Keep moving ahead, say the board seemed, the board seemed agreeable, favorable.
Should be no change.
Yeah, yeah, I would say no change.
Yeah, I would like to see the, the cost analysis going forward of the turf versus the grass. I mean, it, it seems like the grass is more affordable, but you can use it less, you can't use as much versus.
We have a cost analysis.
Yeah, just get that fleshed out real nice, I like, you know.
Oh, the, the report that we had submitted in 2012, those costs haven't changed much.
We have all those costs before.
Good, update it, just give it the once.
We had all those costs.
Okay, good.
I would say tell those community groups to keep moving forward.
Yeah, I think so too.
You know, I think it's a, I think it's a great gift to the school district, so.
Yeah.
I think we just probably want to have something maybe possibly a little more formal when we go to, to make an approval for support. Okay. Okay, so we're going to move out of regular session, adjourn to executive session under ORS 192660, consultation with legal counsel related to litigation, are litigation likely to be filed? We'll take a short five-minute break, and then we'll go into executive session. Okay, we'll move out of executive session and back into regular session, and with no other business, we're adjourned, thank you.